To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the wishes stands. One nation, under God, in the name of the government, the liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you for coming this evening. I would like to read portions of Board Policy Number 1230, Public Participation at Board Meetings. The Board of Education encourages public participation on school-related matters at board meetings, as outlined in this policy. To allow for public participation, a period not to exceed 30 minutes shall be set aside during the first part of each board meeting for public comment, with priority given to comments on items on the meeting's agenda. A second 30-minute time period will be set aside at the end of each board meeting for public comments on matters pertaining to the district, but not on the agenda. These periods may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Persons wishing to address the board shall advise the board president prior to the scheduled start time of the meeting. The request shall be made in writing on a form provided by the district, shall include the name of the speaker, the address, telephone number, name of the organization, representative if any, and a brief description of the topics to be addressed. Presentation be as brief as possible. No speaker will be permitted to speak for longer than five minutes. The board will not permit a public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Persons making presentations at board meetings will address remarks to the president and may ask questions or comments to the board members or other district officials only upon the approval of the president. If you would like to address the board tonight, the forms are on the table by the door. Please complete them and give them to District Clerk Miss Tania. Also, as a reminder, guests at the board meeting should wear face masks and observe all social distancing protocol. So we're going to shift the agenda a little bit tonight because we are very, very pleased to have our state cross-country champions with us in attendance tonight. So we're going to ask all of you, both boys and girls, to stand up and please come to the front of the group. So we have Vinnie Mingo, Caleb Edwards, Adam Furman, Craig Costa, Van Furman, Connor Wyant, Thomas Hotelling, our Class D champions with their coach, Mr. Chip Furman. And we also have with our cross-country boys, our cross-country girls who finished as our Section Nine champions and did very well in states. We have Chrissy Walker, Bryn Holy, Amelia Mickelson, and Delaney Hoffman. So on behalf of the board, we are so thrilled. It was a very exciting meet on Saturday. We made school history. Cross-country, I have a total new respect for every single runner who has that as a hobby or has that as a passion because you guys killed it over the weekend and we are so incredibly proud of you. So, thank you and congratulations. And we also, Mr. Ekoff, you snuck in late. Mr. Ekoff is our girls' cross-country coach. So, well done. Mr. Claus, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I've got the privilege of watching the team at the sectionals, the OCI championships, the sectionals, and the state meet. I can't tell you.
So again, I had the honor of being with the team for OCI Championship, Section Nine Championship, and the state meet. First of all, I'd like to commend our coaches for doing an excellent job the whole season. They're pretty much working with the team six days a week, going to invites all over New York State. I'd like to thank the board and all the administration for supporting those efforts as well. Consummate professionals who love the sport, and I think it transcends to our students that are involved. Our student athletes up here right now, they represent some of the best that Tri-Valley has to offer, both academically, athletically, leadership-wise. There's student athletes up here that are leaders in other groups here as well. Watching them at contests, the way they basically act as a family, support each other, move around, you know, it was really, really fun to see. Last Saturday was one of the most enjoyable and rewarding days I've had in athletics. And, you know, it is just fun to watch this team and program. I think it's hard to separate the boys and the girls here because they do pretty much everything together day in and day out. It's going to be really fun next year, hopefully when we have, we have our fifth and sixth runners or more on the girl's side, and we get a shot to send both teams together for the state championship. So, couldn't be more pleased with student athletes, coaches. Thank you for all that you've done, you know, not only this season but every season with our running and track programs. And either one of you have something you'd like to say?
Yes, we are a very proud team to represent Tri-Valley. It is a huge honor for us to be state champions for Tri-Valley. You know, it's been so long. You know, the girls had a big run back in the eighties, and they had another run in the nineties, but unfortunately the boys' team had never really developed. The highest we got was ever was second place. So we're very proud of these guys and what they've accomplished. I've been telling them, a lot of these guys have been coaching since about seventh, eighth grade, and, you know, I knew back then that the talent was there. We just needed to develop as athletes and mature, and we kind of knew that it was going to go that way. We also would like to thank the school, especially Mr. Claus, for the homecoming that we received, actually for the send-off first, the pep rally that we had out in the parking lot, but then the homecoming was absolutely unbelievable. It just shows what a great community Tri-Valley is. We're very proud of it and, you know, thank you for that. These are times that these kids will never, ever, ever forget in their lives. They'll be bringing their own kids through the hallways here one day, looking at those trophies and having those memories all return. So thank you.
So, so our boys are racing again on Saturday at the Federation Race, which is the next kind of level up from states. Am I correct with larger competition?
Correct. So, we raced against the public high schools. Now they're going to add in the Catholic high schools, the New York City schools, pretty much anybody who wasn't included in a public high school, they all get to compete on Saturday at Oden Park in Poughkeepsie for the true state championship, I guess it would be.
Best wishes. We're incredibly proud of you. So, job well done. You guys trained really, really hard, and it was a pleasure to welcome back some champions on a Saturday night in the freezing cold. But you guys don't have to stay for the rest of the board meeting. You're more than welcome to leave. But thank you for coming out, and again, congratulations.
Can I quickly say something?
Sure.
I'm just going to thank everyone for the support because it was a real honor to go to the state meet, but it was really the support that allowed us to win it from the coaches and from back at the school and all the parents that showed up. It was really cool to see.
Thank you, Thomas. Well, good luck Saturday, guys. All right. Have a good night, everybody. We'll give them a chance to scoot out. All right. So, there are no items of correspondence, public comment session for items that are on tonight's agenda. Mr. Curry, do you have any items on the agenda that you wish to speak about, or do you want to hold off until later? Is that better? Is it any better? Is it on? It's on? Okay. All right. So you're going to hold off until the end? Okay. All right. Next, we have presentation, audio proposal presentation by our Director of Technology, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, everyone. So, last, at our last board meeting, there was one proposal which I had shared with the group that was from Hudson Valley Audio Visual, and since then I have gotten two others. Those should be in your board packets. We looked at all three of the quotes. The Sweetwater quote came in slightly less than the Hudson Valley Audio Visual, but from a, there were a couple advantages to the Hudson Valley Audio Visual one. First of all, they provide training to our staff on the use of the equipment. They will assemble all of the equipment, and we will get support from them for a full year, from the time that we purchase it. Another big advantage there is really just the buying local, putting our money into a business that is local, and it can cycle back around to us again. The Sweetwater quote really was less impressive. That was really built off of what, I believe it was Eldred, I was able to find out exactly what they were using and kind of upscale it for what we're doing, and that was where that one came from. And then the B&amp;H quote is about $800 more than the Hudson Valley Audio Visual. The big advantage, if we were to go with the B&amp;H quote over the other, is really the microphone type. So the Hudson Valley Audio Visual, just to be aware, each of you would have kind of this style mic, but they're wireless. So it would sit there. When we're done, they go in a case and they charge. You'd each have your own mic that can be turned on and off. So, when multiple board members are speaking, you'll all be able to be heard clearly, unlike, right now, we've only have two individuals miked. The, all of the mics for that system are this style of mic. So when administrators speak or guests speak, we'd have one of these on the podium. So that's kind of the only real drawback to that Hudson Valley Audio Visual quote from my perspective. The quote from B&amp;H includes the, the microphone types are actually the type that you have in front of you right now, but they're more designed for this purpose. They're a Sennheiser, which is an incredible audio company, so the quality of those microphones is extremely high. But my personal opinion is it's probably not worth the extra $800, plus we lose that training for our staff, and we also lose the year of support if we go with the B&amp;H trial. Any questions?
So the Hudson Valley Audio Visual is the one that you presented to us last time. That's the one that you prefer to go with? This is, I have no idea what. It's really hard to distinguish unless you're technologically.
Agreed, agreed. And bear in mind that while I am technologically very savvy, obviously, I'm not an audio engineer, which is exactly why I turn to people who were. And B&amp;H and Hudson Valley Audio Visual both were able to give us solid quotes that I've got all confidence that either one would work fine for us. But it really comes down to, as long as we're comfortable with that style of wireless mic for individuals from the public who speak or presenters, then that's going to be fine for us. If we feel that it's worth the extra money to make sure that we have this style of mic that could then be used for other functions besides the board meetings, then that's where B&amp;H really has the edge on that one.
Are you able to upgrade the mics with the Hudson Valley Audio Visual to go with the better quality? From what you're saying, you're going to appreciate the training, the service. Totally makes sense to me. Everything's useless if we don't know how to use it.
Correct.
Don't ask me to use it. Put it in front of me. I can handle that.
Yes.
Anything more than that. Now, if you upgrade to get the best mic you think that we need or we use the most?
I wouldn't say best, because it's really just a different style of mic. I think the microphone quality from the Hudson Valley AV solution is also excellent. It's just a matter of not so much of quality. I think those are very good mics, not necessarily Sennheiser, you know, what you would see on stage at a world-renowned concert kind of quality, but still very, very good quality for the purpose that we're using. It's more of just the form factor of the microphone.
So are we looking to move forward with the approval of this process?
If you're ready, that would be good.
Are you ready to move forward with the approval? All right. So, based on the recommendation of our Director of Technology, it looks like we're going to be moving forward with the approval of the Hudson Valley Audio Visual quote that was given to our Director of Technology for the price of, was it $11,297? Yes?
Yes.
All right, need a motion and a second. Motion Pat. Second Keith, any discussion? Please proceed to vote yes by raising your right hand. Norma, that's unanimous. All right, good luck, Aaron. And how quickly are you anticipating it's going to be usable? All right, thank you, Aaron. All right, next, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Silver.
I have a few things. First of all, with the approval of the vaccine for children five years old and up, the Department of Public Health is running clinics in three places, three places around the county, Monticello, Liberty, and I'll be darned if I can remember the third place. But they're also offering to come to school districts and do clinics on-site if people are, if there's enough interest. So we're in the process of developing a questionnaire to send home to parents to survey to see whether there's interest in having a clinic right here. So I will keep you posted on that. Secondly, I'd like to thank Shop Right. They gave us 23 cases of hand sanitizer. We just had to go pick it up. So thanks to Shop Right for that. I know we've talked about COVID testing for staff members since September. We really are going to start testing the week after Thanksgiving. We're all, we're pretty well set with that. Bob and Angela are spearheading it and have it all organized. He shows great confidence, and we should be ready to go. We've notified staff to let us know either the vaccination status or the waiver to register with affinity. So that will be good to go. We're right now down two nurses, which is a problem. Our elementary school nurse and our Jessica, our shared nurse between the two buildings, she'll be back on Monday, we hope, but it's making it very difficult for us to cover all the things that we've always covered here. Going back to 2002, we've had coverage for all sporting events and after-school activities. We just can't do that. Nurses start by, they're morning by riding the medical bus at 6:45. They have to ride the medical bus after school. There's all the afternoon after-school activities, plus everything that goes on during the day. So at least for now, we're unable to do that. We wanted to let the public know. On our website is a memo that Danielle and I wrote, and want to assure if there are any parents with kids with particular medical needs who want to attend school events, they should call Danielle, and we'll make, work together to try to find a solution that works for us and for the families. So it's a big change for us. No other, no other district in the county provides as much nursing coverage for activities as we do. So we're kind of falling back to what everyone else has done for years. So, anyway, sorry about that, but we'll keep trying to do the best we can. And the last thing I wanted to mention, I don't know how many of you looked at onboard last week, but the annual Ms. Smith survey was in there, and there's just some really interesting data. So if you haven't looked at it yet, open it up and take a look. They compared 2018 to 2021, and the data point that shot caught my eye the most was in 2018, about 50% of all board members spent five hours or less on board work. By 2021, it was only 35% spent less than five hours, so that meant they spent more. And we're up to 4% of board members who spend 20 hours or more on board work. So it's just the whole shift of more board member involvement in the operation of the school. So it's, I bet if we went back to 2010, we'd see those numbers shift even more to the left. So, anyway, that's sort of just fun reading for anyone who wants to do that. And that's all I have, Ben.
I have a question, just a general statement. I just want to acknowledge Diana Gray, our schooler. She's pulling probably triple duty at this point. I got an email from her about a question I had at 11:20 Monday night. So I know she's a rock star, but just, I tell her all the time, thank you for what you do, but really this time, I have to thank you for what you're doing here, but it is certainly appreciated and noticed.
I agree. All right. Moving forward. Any items the board wishes pulled to tonight's agenda? Okay, none. I need a motion and a second. Second Pat, a key, any discussion? Please proceed to vote. Thank you, Norma. Next, Board Committee Reports. Policy Committee, I believe, are meeting next week?
Monday, yeah.
Monday. There is a, quite a large list of policies that need updating, so thank you, Policy Committee. Old business, no items of old business. We are now to public comment, oh, wait, yep, public comment session for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Curry, do you have any items for, items not on tonight's agenda? I think these are more sensi, right, the newer microphones are more sensitive. You should hear us crystal clear by the time that the new equipment comes in. So hopefully, hopefully it'll be a better setup. Any other items? All right. Thank you, Mr. Curry. All right, new business, acceptance of a gift. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts with appreciation a donation from Sandy Eritz through New York State NYSC Retirement Council Number 13 grants in the amounts of $500 to purchase bikes and helmets for pre-K program. Additionally, upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education amends the 2021-22 general fund budget as follows. Revenue account A, 2705, $500. Budget account A, 2250-450-00-000, $500. And motion and a second. Motion Brent, Second Rose. Please proceed to vote. I didn't notice. We are very thankful for Sandy's generous donation. Next, we have resolution to approve athletic merger varsity wrestling with Fallsburg Central School District for 21-22 and appoint a coach. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, that the Board of Education, oh, wait, that didn't change. All right, be it resolved, the board approves the athletic merger between Tri-Valley Central School District and Fallsburg Central School District for varsity wrestling for 2021-2022. The board also appoints David Milan, varsity wrestling coach for this merged team for 2021-2022. Any motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion Aaron, Second Rose. Any discussion?
Just a question. Would we merge, this might be a question for Bob. Bob, would we merge sports? How does the salary structure work? Does it, do media's pay half? Does candidate get our full?
We've done it a couple different ways. Sometimes, one of the agreements we've had related to sharing the coaching and sharing the transportation, depending upon which school it is. This particular year, usually the coach is a staff member of one of the schools. You know, one of the schools is paying. We don't split the pay. We just send the We just send a bill out and get reimbursed for it usually, for the most part. There are cases where we have shared, you know, split the cost in each pay, but we found it's much easier to do it in-house once and then just send a bill at the end of the year because we do some reconciliation on the transportation costs. The merging thing is, you know, it's, you know, a lot of moving parts at once. It's usually great to wait till the end of the year. But usually, I prefer the home district pay for it where the employee's really coming from and then we split it at the end.
I just have a question for Jason. Jason, are you seeing an increased number of interest in the high school kids for wrestling yet or no?
So right now, we have nine athletes that are part of the program. Fallbrook has 10. I would say, pre-COVID, we're slightly up. We had one season where we merged with Fallbrook prior to COVID. We might be up more than two students from there. But the nice part about it was the students that were part of the program pre-COVID, most of them are still in. So, you know, so I think the program is getting better numbers. I don't know when we'll have the numbers to sustain our home. You know, and there's also, as we gain numbers, there's, you know, the merging protocols and procedures. Eventually, if we keep adding numbers, it won't allow us to stay merged. It'll happen, it'll happen to. Right now, it's working for home schools. And Coach Milan does a great job servicing both districts.
I agree. I think it's a great program and they seem to work, the kids seem to mesh well together and they work cohesively. So I was just curious if we had any more interest or not. All right, so please proceed to vote. Thank you, Norma. Next, resolution to approve athletic merger, modified wrestling coach with Fallsburg Central School District for '21-'22 and appointed coach. Be it resolved, the board approves the athletic merger between Tri-Valley Central School District, Fallsburg Central School District for modified wrestling for '21-'22 school year. The Board appoints Jake Scanna as modified wrestling coach for this merged term for '21-'22. Need a motion and a second? Motion Pat, second Aaron, any discussion? Please proceed to vote. Unanimous. Thank you, Norma. All right, school tax collection, '21-'22. Mr. Whitaker.
How you doing tonight? Is that thing on? Okay, thank you. Everybody here okay? Before I get down to the front part, the numbers and stuff, I just want to go through some processing. Those of you in my office, we remember last year where we had some debacle of bills not getting to their taxpayers and stuff. We met starting in April and came up with, trying to at least be proactive and take care of that. We placed some ads in newspapers telling them the tax bills were out. We went to every local post office and put the banners out there saying that the tax bills are out. If you haven't received your bill, please contact us. We actually reached out to 35 taxpayers last year that didn't get their bill telephonically to make sure that their tax bills got to them. I'm happy to say, not because of all that work, just because things were a little different this year a little better, we had very few complaints that people did not get their tax bills. However, there were people that didn't get their tax bills. This year, because the ability to telephonically talk to someone, not everybody was working from home, we did find out part of the root cause of that problem. If I was, had a mortgage on my house and my escrow payment was coming out of the bank and I paid off, now it's my... The information from the mortgage company was getting to the tax assessor, to the programming people to make sure that my bill now comes to me. They just kept sending it to the mortgage company. And the mortgage company says, well, I don't owe this. So what the heck with it? We found 26 instances of those this year. Unfortunately, that, some of that's out of our hands, but at least we became aware of it. And so I would say at least from our point of view in-house, the phone calls about, I didn't get my tax bill. You people never sent them and everything were diminished quite dramatically this year. And we're happy about that. So on your agenda there, you can see that this year we collected 90.52% of the taxes that we levy. That number's down from previous years, but still 90% exceeds every other district in this county. Once again, our taxpayers support us educationally in such a great manner. We also have to realize last year there was a lot of stimulus money floating around, a lot of different things. So I think you're part of that. You're seeing the impact of some of the COVID people that aren't working or may not have as much money and tax bills aren't as easy. But still, 90% is a great total. It makes my job very simple for the rest of the year. Cash flow is not an issue. So we're able to maintain what we do and really stay on top of things and hopefully maximize the interest levels on those. As usual, you signed off tonight on the tax warrant. We will turn over unpaid taxes to Sullivan in Ulster County. And sometime in April, whatever wasn't paid, we get made full anyway. So, you know, but that's a small amount. The grand total for that is a little, just under $2 million. So we know that in our cash flow procedures, in April, we're receiving $2 million from the counties, which helps us manage our money during the course of the year. But I would say overall, after the, just different circumstances of last year, this year went pretty smoothly. I would like to thank Angela, Norma, and Kim in my office and the Catskill Hudson Bank who collects our taxes. They make it pretty simple for us here, seamless. But any questions?
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Norma.
Thank you.
So you have an additional section here. You're going to discuss next year.
Yeah, I'm warming up for budget season. You know, I got it ready, you know. It's like preseason for me.
Hard to believe it's here already.
The budget calendar that you have before you tonight is just the proposed budget calendar for the upcoming season. It's not the next board meeting. It will be up for adoption. It's very similar to what we've done in the past. Dr. Silver and I have had some preliminary conversations about changing up a couple different ways we present information to you. Just, I'm looking forward to it because you do something a little different every year. It's more, it's helpful for me. It keeps you more engaged. But if anybody has any questions during budget season on any of the information presented to you, you have inquiries beforehand, you know where I work.
We look forward to budget season, don't we?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so now announcements, reminders, and upcoming events. Mr. Polley.
This past weekend, we had a wonderful play put on by our students. It was well-attended. In the mode of trying to get back to having students participate in authentic, real, live activities versus Zoom meetings, we currently have 14 students that are in Milwaukee with the FBLA during the National Fall Leadership Conference. This Saturday, we'll be sending four students to the Coral Area All States this weekend. Very, very proud of them. And the rumor is, yes, we are planning and having a prom, which will be Saturday, May 14.
That's very exciting, very, very exciting.
Yeah. And today, we had members from the SALT team, which is the Sullivan Alliance Leadership Team, which is comprised of a number of different civic and social organizations here, meeting with students. And it's a partnership that we look forward to continuing.
I also don't have any.
Good evening. So the elementary has nothing new to report, but we do have our Thanksgiving break next week. So we just want to wish you and everyone a happy, safe, and healthy Thanksgiving break.
Thank you. Okay, with that, if there are no other announcements, upcoming events, it's time to adjourn this meeting, 7:35 PM. There's no need to go into an executive session. So I need a motion and a second. Motion Pat, second Aaron. Please proceed to vote. If you're traveling, travel safe. Have a happy Thanksgiving if you celebrate. And we will see you December 2nd. Have a nice evening.